Well, I believe what she has to do would be to request the service to us.
Right.
And then you can have, I already put a request in for it.
First steps.
And I believe that would be a small method.
But before you do talk to Greg because he done with the contract on that.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we, we bought that old and I don't know if you can get pods for it, so maybe Greg has more information.
She, she tells me it works, said.
Well, it will work, but it also breaks, you know, that's why we got a new one.
Right, right. Well, I don't.
Well, that was many years ago, I'm talking, you know.
Oh, so she was sucking him in to get it out of him.
Yeah, she doesn't wanna do it.
No, you don't want, I, I gotta, I gotta tell you, if some of the, you know, if some of the
We need to reiterate.
better functions don't work, but it at least collates.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm making decks of stuff.
I, I understand, but it, it will, it can totally break, stop working. And it's old and it's expensive to fix, that's all I'm getting at.
More than expensive to fix.
You're welcome to take it, you know, once you declare it service. And try and use it until it dies or until you find out it's more than you can afford to fix, you know.
Interestingly enough, and I'm not offering this to you guys.
Okay, but with the.
But one of my guys
No Saturday.
is a copier repair trainer.
Wow.
So what he has to do in order to train people to repair is he has to take like the newest machine.
Yeah.
And take it totally apart and rebuild it as part of his knowing the machine end to end.
Oh, did he does, yeah.
Sounds like a Taco Bell, uh, training module where they so that you know, you know, if you, if you're a manager on Taco Bell, you have to know how to take every single piece of the clip on the bar in the store. Reassemble, fry it later, all the stuff.
Wow.
But they do that for a reason.
Absolutely. It might work out.
All right.
Debbie might not get enough if she finds out.
We back on the address?
Yeah.
Okay, we're back on.
That was between us.
So soon as Nancy, uh, prints up the paperwork, we'll be able to find us another.
But in the, in the meantime, I suppose I could accept the motion to, um, accept the contract as amended and, um, move on to signing the contract.
Sure.
Whoever would like to make that.
Right, babe.
Make the motion on it.
I'll make, I'll make that motion down that you decided.
Okay, no, just a second, all right, any discussion? All set?
All set, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Ava?
All right.
Thanks.
Um. All right, um, well, I've had some information, he wanted to, um, talk to us about.
Okay.
So I know that, uh, we put it off till this meeting because Betty was not available to, um, meet with us last time.
An other judge for what?
It was my idea.
Okay, thank you.
So I will give you a couple of handouts.
Thank you.
I did follow those instructions. I always have one thing.
Thanks.
I may, I may give you this, and this, Nancy, I didn't make one of these for you, but it's not anything. I can't make this, not a, not a deal, I'm just saying definitely, however, that is it. I thought I knew four. What I just gave you, the typed version, I know the other one looks like more fun because it's got graphics on the front. However, uh, the one that I just gave you is the job description for the former, uh, fire chief. And then the most recent job description that the committee worked on, which is ultimately the one we accepted.
Do I have to go over that?
Yes, did you what?
Secretary of the Board. What is that?
That was, oh, that was, that, I'm sorry. So first page, the first page is the old fire chief's description.
This one's good.
Yeah. Uh, second page is the clerk's job description.
Okay.
And then the third and the fourth, I'm sorry, and the fifth page are the details of the clerk's position. So what I didn't give you in that package was the current, uh, job description, I think I asked last time I was here. And we talked about that and you guys indicated you had it, but you don't have it in your hands. So I should probably make copies of that, 'cause I want you to, I want you to keep the two, um, the two together. 'Cause it makes the most sense, um, as I go through this. See that, I even.
Right in that.
I love a good copier, okay, there's nothing like it. You had to see me collate now and say, it's terrible. I'll play this one more check. Soon we got your job.
Great, thank you.
If I get it right.
All right, thank you. Looking at the front page here, at the bottom, I see that it's here, ensure that all MSDSs are properly kept, have you found all this stuff?
Moving forward.
Or they all, I mean, I would imagine businesses that have flammable must have to mail them or.
It's, what I, what I have discovered for the most part is businesses that are required to supply certain sets of information. And I use Chesterton as an example, they're very good at it.
They are.
I mean, that's, that's a discipline they have, it's their business.
Yeah.
Um, at the lower level, I don't know, because I don't know if everybody is aware of the regulation that governs what they have. Now, there's a new regulation that's called type two reporting, no, tier two reporting, I'm just starting to learn about that. And that's probably businesses all over town. The highway department probably has stuff that they need to report, um, but I need to get some training on that in order to better understand it. But the reason that I passed out these two job descriptions was to understand the differences between the new one, where it talks about chiefs duties. And then the one that was, um, that, that John worked under. And if you read through them line by line, and I know you've all had experience with job descriptions. But the differences between things like, uh, plans, coordinates, supervises, prepares and establishes, plans and implements. I mean, those verbs are very different than the one in the previous one where it says oversee. Okay, to oversee something is not the same as to develop and implement. Very, very different, okay, depth and breadth of what's going on there. So the discussion that we need to have is, I already told you, I don't believe that it's humanly possible to do this job as described in fourteen hours a week. It's just not humanly possible. So what I proposed, and what I am proposing, which I will, I will pass out. I, I prepared something to hopefully keep us focused, come on, get up, Joe. Follow me up. Uh, keep us focused. So my original presentation to the board and when I presented my operational plan, uh, my cover slide was that I would, in fact, and I'll remind you exactly what I said, improve the overall effectiveness of the fire department within the existing budget. I have performed an analysis over the last ninety days of most everything, um, we do, or that we have, at least as, as much as I could within ninety days. There's, there's a lot to look at. So what I've given you here is, and by the way, since we met last time, I had to submit my budget to Greg. So I had to get a budget in. So I said, okay, and I know the process is I submit a budget, then we meet and we talk about my budget, and then we go to FinCom and we talk about my budget. Okay? So I, I understand it's a longer process. What I did here was pretty much what I described in a previous conversation where I took some oppo, you know, looked at some opportunities to create more hours for the chief and move some money around inside the existing budget, uh, coming out the same. So the discussion points that I, that I, I think we need to have, and, and I know this is gonna be a lot, it's probably gonna be somewhat of a long process to get us there. Was one, uh, to, to look at a way to increase the chief's hours from fourteen to thirty, to meet the job description requirements. Now, based on our contract negotiation, I know that can't happen until we go through a more formal process of, um, a new budget. By where the budget's accepted at town meeting. So that's a, that's a longer range thought. But what I, what I, you know, part of the way to fund that was one, to eliminate the clerk's role that, that we currently have. And do that through automation, which is basically install some software that enables you to do all of that in, in an automated way.
Just step two?
I moved the inspector wages over to the chief in order to allow an opportunity to maintain, maintain consistently throughout the process. There's, there's two parts to it now, I look at some plans, I do the front end of it, and then an inspector goes out later, it's not the same person, so the inspector doesn't really know what the earlier discussion might have been. Also, the, the inspections are done at the, um, I don't wanna say, at the convenience of the inspector. Now, quite honestly, the inspector does a good job of scheduling things, so it's not about that. But this is, you get a lot of calls to say, I happen to be here, can you come out right now? And oftentimes, we can't do that, so this is kind of a, it's two things, one, having me more involved in all inspections. Because here's one of the problems with fourteen hours a week, sitting in the office, I don't see any customers. And I'm, I'm not out in the community enough, I'm not in homes, I'm not in businesses, I'm not in those places where you would think you'd want your fire chief to be. No, I'm in my office, okay? So this was an opportunity to just slide some money over and say, it's in my job description, I'm responsible for that. So I'm responsible for it, but I pay somebody else to do it. Drill wages, um, I put in here to implement, uh, the, a training plan within the budget. So I'm working on the training plan, I told you I could stick to budget. So I've, I've indicated for, uh, fiscally a fifty and a reduction in the training budget. Quite honestly, it's just better management of what we currently do and making sure that we have, you know, one hour's training is one hour, not two hours. And, and being a little tighter with some of that stuff. Uh, the Mass Academy stays, that's sending firefighters into the actual academy and getting training. And, um, and the expenses are, are basically the same. Well, the other thing I did here was reduce the firefighter wages by, um, about half of what I was paid the previous year. So one of the discussions we had, and I had this, I said, it, it's nice, I'm the fire chief, you give me nineteen thousand dollars a year. You paid me fifteen thousand dollars a year last year, and I had no responsibility, other than to go on calls. Well, by the way, that was a reduction in my hourly wage by five dollars an hour. So some of that just, you know, didn't make sense to me. So this was, um, so you say, well, if you took some of the out of the wage account, can, can, will you be over on wages? Well, no, because I was the top wage earner, by far. My replacement would have half my hourly wage, assuming you backfill from the bottom, firefighter gets fifteen and change an hour, I was getting thirty one and change an hour. So can't take all of my salary, move it over, you can only take half. So this was just rearranging inside the existing budget, isn't the only way it can be done. Certainly, and I'm open to suggestions from the board, I'm open to suggestions from finance, uh, when we get there. Now, this, this is certainly looking forward. Uh, the reason for moving money out of the drill wages into the chief's salary was personal development of the chief. Nowhere inside of the job description, although the job description says I need to stay on top of getting trained, in some way it says that. But when you work fourteen hours a week, there's not a lot of time to go to training. Uh, and a number of the classes that, you know, at, at the level they need to have, there are thirty, forty, fifty, sixty hour classes. You know, all rolled up, I should have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty hours a year of training, that's what that money represents, that's what I moved over. We, we talked about the fire chief's credentialing was some discussion we had during the job description, uh, committee meetings. I have a copy of that here, but the credentialing is the professional development of the chief. So, you know, as I said earlier, when, when do I get trained? 'Cause the, the world is changing, the fire service is changing rapidly. When do I get my training? Because certainly you would want the training from the top down. Um, I did look at, uh, the budget, I, I did a, I did an analysis of the budget over the last three years, Jackie gave me all the information. Uh, this easily fits inside of any one of those budget years, easily. Um, with a planned approach to purchases and training and so forth. As, as I told you earlier, I have, you know, this is a good match for my skill set because I'm fiscally responsible and certainly can manage budgets, and that's what this is. So the next part here, the transition February through June, and this was what I asked for at the previous meeting, was in order to bridge the gap and give me some additional hours to do some work, would be to appoint me as the acting clerk, much like Mr. Clement was the acting clerk for the last two years. And inside of that, uh, gives me time to take all of the functions and all of the activities that we have today that are conducted by the clerk and transitioning them or migrate them to the new software so that they can be done, um, basically automatically.
What do you think the hours would be to do that job with, uh, the software program or whatever you're speaking about?
Well, um, it's, it, it's tricky.
Uh-huh.
We don't have a good record of how many hours does it take to perform the payroll function today.
Okay.
Don't really know that. John said, well, it, it depends, 'cause you really do your payroll twice a year, which is the real, you know, the, the big one, as we call it.
But it's, it's got a running monthly.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I, I, I don't know, he, he's given me some estimates, but I, I wouldn't, spends a lot of time on that. Um, I did bring in here a copy of steps to do that. Donnie, who I think, when I was here before, was a little intrigued by, really, you get software to do all of that? So there's the current instructions for how we do business today. Okay? That's how we do it today. I was able to get two on a page because they're actually written on a five by seven note paper. That's the process.
And this is all currently done, or what type of an operating system is on that computer? I mean, is it?
Do I have a copy of that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I do, thank you.
I just made it in a.
I mean.
It's a little bit.
It's a little bit of Lotus and then it's a little bit of Excel.
So they still have the Lotus?
Yeah. Mr. Jordan did a nice job of, of, you know, building something that's kinda homemade. We've outgrown it. We've just outgrown it.
Well, that, that's been around since when I was.
We've outgrown it. And, and so if I was to tell you to do payroll, if it takes John six, eight, ten hours, if he spends a whole weekend on it, I, I don't know. But I talked to the, the, uh, the folks in Georgetown who have the program that I'm looking at, the one I'm leaning to most. And the deputy chief does the payroll, I think he said, once a week, it takes him a half hour. But we don't need it once a week, we, they paid it from New York, so you need it once a month, it's still a half an hour.
So reading the, do you have a cellphone that we're paying for?
Yep. I do. What are you looking at?
I'm way ahead, I've flipped.
That's okay.
I've flipped.
Oh, yes, 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 no, I, um, you, you, you get the idea by looking at this. We've outgrown this, I, I do have a cellphone, um, that you're paying for. I have found a lot of opportunities to, to save money, Donnie asked about buying the software. So, well, actually, I got a quote in October, and I called a woman today, they've gone up like two thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
She's gonna honor my previous quote, which is very nice. I can, I can buy the software with the money I'll save from not buying paper runbooks. So the runbook that we used, that Donnie was on, is a carbonless, two-page form. We pay a thousand dollars a year to buy those runbooks. Okay? Just that one thing, and all that is, is a record that's taken in the station after the call. And then that gets dropped in a box that goes to a folder where someone takes it and does data input. We just outgrown, it's, it's rather, um, it's rather cumbersome, the whole process is, and there's, at this point, there's only one person that knows how to do it.
One?
The clerk. I think I could, if I spent a lot of time going through these instructions and paying attention to the things that say be careful. And pay attention and, and that kinda. Anyhow, so the opportunity to automate and let me transition all of those activities, all of those functions into the software is basically you build it, and you just add people as they join, or delete people as they leave. And it gives us something we don't have today, gives you records, we don't have records, we don't have training records. I have a record of attendance at training, but I don't have a training document for a firefighter that says he has all these certifications. I don't have it in one place that's neat, neat and orderly.
Right.
And, you know, when the day comes that something goes terribly wrong.
And you need to produce that and somebody who's certified trained.
And, and we need to produce it because someone's looking for it, yeah? When was the last time this person was trained?
Now, what about, in that software, does it also work with the inspections?
Does everything.
It does.
Everything you could think of. It has GIS mapping, I mean, it has every, its modules, we would never even, it's designed for a small volunteer department. It's designed for the city of New York to use. So you could buy any one of the modules, I thought I brought a copy, that's like way overlooked. We need a base module with, and what I looked at was to add to it, um, the water supply module, which puts all your higher end stuff on. And your pre-planned incident, uh, module, which, which allows you to go out, pre-plan every high-risk property in town.
So with that, would our dispatchers have that information in front of them?
They could.
But it's not part of what you're counting.
Correct.
But it, once you get that all established, wouldn't that make sense?
There, there are dispatch modules that go with it. You know, some of it that you need to look at, bless you, some of it you look at is, um, buying a module for something you might do rarely, um, is not good spend. I mean, we build for some things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's not a return of the.
Oh, my gosh.
We just voted that the flu was gone, right?
Flu was out.
So anyhow, not, not to get off on the soft, the software is like, I'm going to do that. Whatever happens here, I'm buying the software, 'cause that's where I'm going. It, that's like, I'm the, I'm like the only guy that goes to a meeting that's not talking about software. I'm the only guy. We're so far behind on that, there's, you know, it's time to move that piece forward, just it, so I'm going to do that. It's in my budget, it's well within my budget, I find savings within my budget. Uh, but what I'm saying is during this transition period, make me the clerk and let me transition the work. And then when we come back later and say, by the way, we eliminated that, and we can move that over and put it in the, in the chief's job description. So I'm asking to be the acting clerk now, just like you did for the, my predecessor, and then negotiate, talk, discuss, whatever. Rearranging the fire chief's position for, for town meeting eventually and, uh, and beyond.
I'll do a backwards, but we already voted this contract, right?
We did do that.
Yep, we did.
Absolutely. With the change.
So the, the other thing, the, the other thing in here that I think you can do is authorize me to get some training and pay for it out of the training budget. Just like anyone else.
The training budget.
The training budget was voted, uh, way back, um, initially, the fire department training was forty-five hundred. There was an override done about a few years ago and it added, um, thirty-five thousand, I believe. Some of the monies were moved out of that at one time. Actually, one of these is yours. So I believe they moved money out of the training, already to pay the clerk, um, many years ago.
Uh, no, they moved it into the academy budget. I believe you look.
Mass Academy?
Yeah, Mass Academy came out of that training budget.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not looking to move it out of training, that's why I said, I need training as well, um, and to pay, 'cause it's, it's, it's tip, it's typically overfunded.
Actually, on this report you have here.
Yep.
All right, you've got your drill wages, but you were showing moving money out of that in your proposal.
Am I missing anything? Do you have this page? No.
I can't say why there was never, you know, a provision to allow the chief to be part of the drill wages before, I mean, I don't know that it was, if, if the engineers ever said they could or they couldn't do that.
Right, I, I couldn't find anything, um, about that. But what, I'm being realistic. All chiefs need training and I, and I'm, and I'm no different.
We'll have to, uh.
The difference in, excuse me, firefighter's wages of the ninety-six something versus eighty-four, how, how can you determine that would be different?
All I did, Betty, there was, um, move over half of my previous year's salary.
Okay. All right.
Nancy, maybe you could find us a phone. Is the problem that when somebody has one position they're getting paid well, that they can't be paid for another situation because they're already, you know, fixed then?
Well, I, I was going to say before you agreed to, and only because I don't know, before you make a decision on the clerk job going to acting clerk to walk, I would check, double check with town council, 'cause I don't know. You know, I don't think we did that with Jordan, I think that was just something that was taken over when Jimmy left. Do you remember Joey, I don't remember.
No, I don't remember, I, Jimmy joined left and he needed, the job needed to be done.
He, he took on the role, but then after the fact, came in and asked if he could collect the monies, and I don't know what the outcome of that bill was.
I, I think we need to clarify, just because it can be a conflict of interest with two jobs. So rather than start off in a prob, you know, with a problem, we should verify that it's okay to do.
Right, that, with that, and also I'm wondering, is there a reason why the fire chief wouldn't be allowed to get wages for training when we have a training budget, we have a drill wages budget? I don't know if there was ever a reason that you couldn't pay the chief for going.
Did the former chief not do drill, get drill wages?
I, I believe, and I, I could be wrong.
No, is that considered training, is that what you're talking about, the drills?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I don't know, I know back when I was on, John did go to the medical trainings, but not so much the other trainings that we were doing, so I don't know what the last twelve years were like, if he came to the drills. But if he did, I'm sure he didn't put his name on the slip.
I, I'm interested in staying current.
Right.
And I'm sure you share the same interest.
So I, I don't know why they wouldn't be allowed to get trained out of the training budget, but again, I don't know if the monies can be paid.
Well, when the budget, when the budget was made, I don't think there was stipulations to it, was there? Does anyone know?
To the drill training thing, I don't believe. Seeing as we did it, I don't, when we, the override was done, I mean, the board of engineers said that they would not support us on town meeting floor on it. It was all on us.
So it was an override, we can look at the override question.
Yeah, it was.
Yep.
Do you remember how long it was, ten years?
It was probably, uh, two thousand, I'm, I'm guessing, right around there.
I'm trying to think, I might have a copy, I can check later.
I'll get all the town reports, it takes me a second to look for that.
It's better than me, 'cause it's a painful process to go through all. It's better than me, 'cause it's a painful process to go through them all.
Why, no, it, yeah.
It's article, it's a, it's a tone, there was two articles, one was for training.
There were two, one for, one for retention and, um...
But it was a town vote too, you signed an override, right?
Yes, it actually was.
Yeah, so I can find it.
Okay.
All right, well, I, I guess we'll have to, you know, get some input as to what we can and can't recommend, that is a good idea or a bad idea.
The, the, the other, I gave Nancy my sheet, the other thing in here was to talk about next steps in, in benchmarking. I, I wouldn't expect you to take everything I have to tell you as gospel, okay? So I'm going to suggest that you either do your own benchmarking. I have some stuff com, I've ta, I have talked to the state fire marshal about this and he was trying to pull some stuff together, 'cause he said he gets a lot of requests like this where town government says to their fire chief, "Come on, you know, how can this be?" And the marshal said to me, "Part of it's my fault, because I require a lot of things of you." I have his delegation of authority and I have to do what the state fire marshal tells me to do. Sounds good, but I said, "Gee, marshal, could you like put some of that in writing?" And, and his executive staff is working on that. The other thing I have is the Essex County Fire Chiefs is working on doing some benchmarking, because what I'm talking about here exists pretty much everywhere else, okay? There's only a couple of communities without a chief that's considered full-time. And while this thirty-hour a week, you know, I don't know if it's part-time or full-time, but it's, it's three-quarters. It'd still be less than one, most of, most of forty hours. I made a, made a copy of something else here. Hopefully, Nancy, I made four. But, 'cause I never want anyone to think for a minute, I didn't make enough, but I'm gonna get Joe my original. Grab a job. Is that, I want you to think I'm, I'm looking to feather my own bed here, 'cause I'm not. This one's the town of Essex, came Friday. Essex is looking at a full-time chief, at eighty-five thousand, and that's a community...
Are they eighty-five? That's a little town.
Thirty-five hundred people.
Yeah.
Nah-uh, thirty-five hundred people, I think, a full-time chief. And I did some benchmarking, most, I'll tell you who isn't. Essex, West Newbury, and Merrimack, but they have a board of fire engineers, but they do pay. And actually, Merrimack does have a full-time chief, they do pay them. And there may be one other community. We are again, I would tell you, a, a little off the pace.
Some things we're not trying to keep up with.
Well, and I don't, you know, in all honesty, you know, it isn't that I'm coming in here saying, "Hey, you guys need a full-time fire chief and you need to add seventy thousand dollars to the budget, and by the way, I'm looking for an eighty-five thousand dollar salary." I know of a, of a community, I'll say this, because now I won't remember the name of the town, but where the gentleman came out of the Mass Fire Academy, he's retired like myself, went to work, took the full-time job and is, and is doing it for, in the fifties. So not everybody gets eighty-five, there's obviously a range. It's my way of telling you, I'm probably a bargain, okay? But it all comes down to, the, the work needs to get done. It's legitimate work. This isn't just more time for me to, to, to be around town. There is real work to be done, to stay on top of, of what's going on.
Well, I've got some ideas and thoughts, if I, if I can share with my, with everyone. So you, you made two presentations, so let me take one at a time. The first one has to do with a transitional plan or, or a request between February this year and June, when the first contract that we've just concluded ends, to assume the role of the clerk. But in doing so, you're also implementing automation with software. That's the idea.
Okay.
That's fine. We can't make that decision, in my opinion, for two reasons. First of all, it would be something that I would wanna take under advisement, I'd wanna think that through. Secondly, we now have a legal question as to whether it's even possible. And so, so that's the first issue. The second issue, I've got a couple of questions, 'cause I'm intrigued by your plan. And this is a, this is more of a strategic plan, where you are suggesting that it would be benefit of the department and to our town to transform the position from fourteen hours to thirty hours. But here's where I find it interesting and I, I need your help with. You're going to do the inspections and you're going to do the clerk's role, even though certainly not like it is now, because it's gonna be automated. I understand, I, I, I'm not concerned that you're gonna be spending twenty hours a week doing clerical stuff. So when you add up the budget for twenty-fourteen, the way it's structured now and then the way you reconfigure it, the number is the same, two thirty-nine, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand on the left side, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand change on the right side, which is fine, that's good. It makes it overall budget neutral. But the position, first, I have a few questions, here's the first one. The position is going to be benefitable at thirty hours. So it's not going to be the same budget neutral issue. There's gonna be an extra bump in there if, if either you or the position, the person who has that position seeks benefits. Would you have an estimate as to what that would be? Anybody?
There's a range of the towns.
About a thousand dollars in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Am I right?
It depends on what plan you take.
What plan, but what's the range?
I'd say, I'd say somewhere from seventy-five to a thousand dollars.
I just remember somebody else's.
Seventy-five hundred to twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, okay, well, that's fine.
Depending on what plan you chose.
Right, but at least the creme de la creme plan is...
Joe, good question, and I don't know fact or fiction, but the former chief was, had that. So he had it and the new guy gets it, then that's kinda revenue neutral, the way I was thinking, I could be wrong.
I understand. The next thing is, what do your, what does the leadership, some of the roles that are now delegated to your deputies.
Yep.
Or to the deputies and captains and what, what are they gonna do? If you're going to assume a significant amount of the things that they now do, such as inspections.
The, the only thing in there is inspections. So it doesn't change anything that anybody else is doing.
Is that question, because you're assuming that the other people have authority to do some of the department's management?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Bob could probably explain.
Yeah, 'cause I, I still, you know, the way things were in the past and where we are and where we wanna go, I, you know, for the benefit of the public as well, give us, you know, any information would be helpful. I mean, you have people right now that do things, that are in leadership positions and you're, this plan here substantially assumes a lot of that, therefore taking that away from people. So are we talking about eliminating positions as well?
No, this, this changes nothing. The deputy fire chief currently also does the inspections.
Yeah.
So he's the inspector. He's not the deputy fire chief when he's doing the inspections, okay? I did him for years as a lieutenant, I did him as a captain. So it has nothing to do with your rank, okay? You go out, check someone's...
Maybe, maybe explain to him what the role of lieutenant's captain is.
So the, the way this works is from the chief down, deputy fire chief, and then captains and lieutenants. The way that we are set up is the deputy fire chief has operational authority at a fire scene. Doesn't manage pers, he doesn't manage every personnel. So he's not, if I'm not away and somebody has a concern or a problem, they don't go to the deputy fire chief, they go to the station captain. So then all of the firefighters report and roll up to the station captain. So the captain has the organization, so basically it's the chief, it's the deputy chief off to the side underneath me and then you follow that line down and it splits and there's two captains, lieutenants, and then firefighters. Is the structure we're currently in, I probably should've given you a copy of that over chat. This doesn't change any of that, doesn't change the way we're organized, doesn't change the way we operate at all.
No, but, but as a compliment to you, you have a strategic vision.
Yes.
So this plan today doesn't change that, but do you plan that it will in the future? Are you planning to change the organizational structure?
No, no.
I don't know if it's good or bad to do so, I'm just trying to get my idea.
I don't have...
Because you're always looking ahead and my concern is that...
We're not, we're not organized any differently than any other fire department. Some don't have, I mean, I, Topsfield does not have a deputy chief. They go straight to captain. And I don't think Rowley has a deputy, I think they go straight to captain. Essex, straight to captains, Merrimack, two deputies. West Newbury's been in and out of deputies and captains and I think they've landed, I mean, everywhere. What you try to have is a flatter org model. Flatter, flatter is better, but you've also gotta have, you know, it's a paramilitary organization, you've gotta have a, a way for people to roll up and up and up.
Is it possible that if you expand the job from fourteen hours to thirty and therefore you're adding sixteen, you could use up all of that sixteen doing inspections and clerks, uh, positions?
No, no.
'Cause that's my concern too, that then you might come back and say, "Well, you know, thirty's not enough now, based on what I'm doing." Not you personally, I...
I unders, I understand the point.
This is not personal, this is the position, person in that position.
So, well, the only thing I would say to that, Joe, is if you guys all of a sudden have this huge wave of development and you're building, you know, a thousand homes a year in the town of Grohl, and then we probably have outgrown that. So I will tell you that your, your, your demographics would drive this, not inside of a fairly, you know, slow, no-growth community, which we are. The demographics will drive what's going on with the job. Regulation may drive it, but not inspections.
Why would there be a reduction of almost ninety-three hundred dollars in firefighter wages from the budget twenty-fourteen, which is what we currently have, to what you would be projecting for FY twenty-fifteen with this new plan?
Because I'm no longer a firefighter. You paid me inside of that, I was your highest earner, okay? So I took half my wages and moved them over, because my replacement would earn half my previous salary.
Same question on the drill wages. I know that that's training, thirty-six thousand, eight sixty, we're going down to thirty thousand, nine sixty-one. I mean, these are numbers that would have to be substantiated by the finance folks as well. But explain to me, 'cause I'm a layman here, I don't know a fire department like you do, so why would there be almost a seven dollar, let's say a six thousand dollar change reduction from FY twenty-fourteen to FY twenty-fifteen in that line item drill wages?
'Cause we don't spend the money. So it's, the, the opportunity is there, we, we don't spend thirty-six thousand dollars, don't know that we ever have.
Okay, that's a good point.
So it's available.
Well, those are the questions I have for now, and I appreciate your presentation.
Those are good questions. Bob, when you're, you know, being perhaps the clerk and changing over to an automated system, will somebody else also need to be trained in that? Should you be away on vacation? How does that work at that level?
I, I, I would train.
You would have somebody?
I would train many.
Okay, not just...
The way, the way the systems work is where, see today, somebody fills out a piece of paper.
Right, a slip.
We talked about checks and balances before, so someone fills out a piece of paper and ties their name to it and it goes downstream and somebody inputs it later. Okay? We take, we believe what's on that paper's true, okay? We really do, and I hope it is. But tomorrow, when it's automated, they all come back from the call, you go into a room and the guy brings the thing up and you just, you type, you actually click on the name and it populates, you put it in the tank, boom, and it's uploaded.
Yeah.
So not only did you get record of the incident, you get record of the payroll and equipment, if you used any, I mean, it's, it's all there. We don't manage inventory, there's no inventory management at all. None, which is problematic, because if you run out of inventory, then you have to do without some things so you can get it, or you discard things that are outdated. Know a lot of that recently. It's hard to manage stuff without a system. You just can't buy boxes and boxes and boxes of supplies, you know what you need. And then something changes, you don't get, we bought a lot of medical supplies, okay? But the fact of the matter is, when we go on a call and we use some equipment, we go to the ambulance and say, "I just used a collar, a couple of..." And they give it to you.
Yeah.
So they give you what you used, so they replace what you used, so guess what? You never get to use the supplies you bought. Just goes on and on and on. There's such an opportunity here to control the entire environment through automation. And then to Donnie's question earlier, "Well, why don't we, you know, it's great, we could save ten thousand dollars." And I said, "I think you should reinvest it." And that's what this is all about, reinve, save some money, you know, work smarter, but reinvest the savings into stuff that really needs to be done. And I, this is all I can say, is, "I'm not making this up, so maybe you need to get a, you know, go find eight or ten fire chiefs that you can talk to and, and get information from them. Or let me do the benchmarking for you, tell me what you want to know and I'll go find it." But I think that's the logical path to finding, is this myth or truth, okay? I believe it to be true, from what I've seen so far. Wonderful opportunity for us, inside of same budget.
A question for you.
Sure.
On the software, I'm, whether we cannot legally allow for a transition or whether we just decide that we really don't wanna do a transition from February to June, you said that you are quite motivated and keen on getting the software anyways. One of the things that motivated me, and I, I can, my, I know that this can be echoed with my colleagues, is the concept of a check and balance, like having that position of a fire department clerk. How has that impacted when the clerk's position is eliminated? You assume that authority or that position through automation. Are we gonna lose that check and balance?
You don't have a check and balance today, Joe.
The only check and balance is...
You do not have one. He doesn't know, he has no way of knowing.
You have the...
And I don't know, 'cause I don't, I never see it. Here's the true answer. You pay me, I pay them. Okay? And by the way, today, there's nothing that says, "I just signed this under, you know, whatever, whatever." Put your initials. I told you last time, guy can stroll in well into the call, never lift a finger, get paid, no rules around that, no checks and balances. Was he there for one hour, two hours, three hours? No checks and balances around that, Joe. So it's riddled with opportunity for mismanagement today. Quite honestly, it, it's software and a proper training, you know, takes care of that. It tightens it up.
If there isn't a transition that's, uh, we're going to grant, either again, because we unwilling or legally we can't, how will you be able to work with the clerk in the current position while phasing in the software?
It's a good question.
Is that gonna be compatible?
It's a good question, so I thought about it. So I could train him to use the new system and then he could input the data in the new system. It's very redundant, I'll go back to what I said earlier. I'm buying the software, I'm installing it and I'll probably migrate the information myself, because I own the process. I'm the guy that needs to, to know how it works. I'm the guy that needs to make sure that its integrity is, is there from the beginning. So I own that. So to involve two people in it? I, I, I don't understand why I would have another person involved in, you know, data conversion, which is all it's gonna be, if this is straight data conversion, albeit manually.
I, I have one last question, I appreciate that.
Sure.
If I was a firefighter here for twenty years, like you said, we have a bit, bit of a problem. You can't go into one location and find my entire training record. I understand that now, okay? Now, if and when you automate, when you automate, 'cause it's inevitable, you said that at some point in the future, you're gonna be able to call up a firefighter's entire history. But that's really just going forward. You're not gonna be able to transcribe paper records now and bring them current. So this software is not gonna bring Joe DeMore's twenty-year record for being here twenty years as a firefighter. Only going forward.
If in your folder is a certification for a course that you took ten years ago, I will put that into the system and it will be recorded.
And who's gonna do all that data entry?
I am.
Okay.
As the acting clerk, that's what I would be doing.
With this software program, does training come with that?
Yes.
And you can put in the individual wage?
Yes.
That these people get paid?
Yep.
So that it'll calculate it all out?
Yep.
Yeah, my, my, my only concern is strategically that sixteen hours additional are going to be used in a... Yeah, my, my, my only concern is strategically that sixteen hours additional are going to be used in inspections and clerk activity. And so therefore you, your fire chief duties that cannot be done in the fourteen hours will still be there, will still remain there, that deficit. It's like a structural deficit, that's my concern.
Eliminating all of this stuff, did you read the clerk's job description?
Yes.
Really? I could get, I could get that down to a half of one paragraph.
Just briefly.
Okay, maintains records, prepares monthly bills, and really. Sometime we should go over there, I'll show you what this maintenance of records really is. From July one to today, there's six folders, six manila folders standing in a rack on a desk. That's six months' worth of work right there. That's what's there, that's it. Six months' worth of medical reports and run reports and expenses, it's all in six or eight folders right there. Inspections, year-to-date. It's not in any system anywhere. It's just waiting to be paper clipped and elasticized and thrown in a drawer.
And all that information will be entered onto that other program?
Yep.
Not the medical records though, right?
No.
Those will still be separate?
Those need to be.
One gets mailed into Northeast DMS.
They need to be handled.
What do you mean by medical records, generically?
If, if, if they go on a run and they have a medical call, there's a document that they have, they fill out at the end of the run.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, depending.
It's protected by HIPAA?
Yes, absolutely.
That, that would have bearing in a disability claim, I think. I think that's all protected.
Has, has lots of, uh, meaning. You know, we get them requested all the time.
Do you have any plans for automating that, or is that some?
Can't do, that's not an automated function.
It's not?
The ambulance company also run, fills those sheets.
They, they fill out their own. We basically, from arrival to when we hand the patient off, you know, document everything from when we first observe, when we arrive, then vital signs, and it's a whole, there's a whole narrative that goes through your thing. And then the, the, the EMT signs it, or the senior person signs the thing. It's a permanent record of what happened on that, on that medical call. But that, that's, that's handled differently. That would, we would have an incident report that said it was a medical call, but it wouldn't have that information in it, it'd be different.
Well, I appreciate your hard work and your dedication to making things better. We can't give, I, I don't think we can give you any hard answers, but.
No, I know that, and, and I know this would be a, um, you know, as, as I realized last time I was here, I broke the seal. Okay, can't be done. I, I, anybody wanna show me how to do all that work in fourteen hours? I'm, I'm open to it. It's not humanly possible. So, you know, in fairness to everybody involved, we, we work on making it right, or we work on reducing the job description, because I feel a little, and I told you, uncomfortable with saying, I'm doing all this.
Right, you don't wanna sit here and say you were able to address it all.
I'm just, I'm being honest.
Okay, then one other, um, thing we had in our folder, and I've, I've seen some of the emails going back and forth on the, uh, you found a fire panel in the basement of the other building that somebody ripped wires out of?
No, 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 I think Nancy's on, on that. I'll tell you what I know, because I ran into the technician from L W builds. You get struck by lightning in June.
How did they know that? And they didn't tell us?
Because someone from this town called them and said, it's not working, come look at it. From what he told me, they responded, they looked at it, they came back again, they looked at it, they notified someone, um, and nothing ever took place.
It never got remedied? No.
Right, it still isn't working today.
It's not.
Um, the question I have on that, did anyone check to see if the smoke detectors internally in the building still operate?
They don't.
They don't operate?
Nothing operates.
Okay. So the.
It's an electrical.
Yeah, um, Nancy is hoping to find out whether or not she has any money left in her municipal budget. You know, once they get all the, the bills in, oil and.
Who would've been authorized to make that telephone call? When they came out and looked, and we, we don't know?
I, I don't know.
Probably someone that knows the building was hit by lightning. Nobody ever told me. I had no clue.
It's the first I've ever heard of it.
Greg said he didn't know about it either, 'cause otherwise, 'cause in the past we've had some lightning hits.
We have had lightning hits.
We've been hit here.
Yeah, and we've put in insurance claims.
Phone system has been.
Housing authority gets hit every lightning storm.
So. We're gonna try and get it done as quickly as possible. It's kind of interesting.
You had a quote on that, did I get a quote about?
There was a quote in the.
Forty-two sixty, something.
I mean, this is where I became the bearer of bad news.
That's not the, but that.
And as I, you know.
That's not an addressable panel anyway, that's just a regular, run-of-the-mill panel like we've always had, right? I mean, it shows different zones.
It's not addressable because you didn't upgrade the wiring. So unless you change all the wiring, you don't get the benefits of addressable. So it's by zone. It tells you, at least it tells you what part of the building it's in. I, I don't, you know, I don't know what to say, other than I have to enforce you getting it repaired. So please, um, work on that.
Well.
And I know Nancy has, you know, she's been good about saying, hey, the fact of the matter is, I need some time to do some analysis.
Right, because under the law, you have your CMAs, I have DOR that tells me I can't spend money I don't have. You know, so I need to, we just spend a lot of money with Burke trying to get the heating system going, you know, replacing pots and new thermostats and whatever. And those bills haven't come in yet, and I explained to Bob, I just need time for the bills to come in, and then I'll go over my budget. I've always been able to best estimate good, you know, I've never run over. And if I have the money in my budget, not my budget, but the municipal budget, I will gladly sign that and have bills over there. If we don't have, if I feel I don't have the money to get me through June, then the next step would be to inform you and the finance board that we need, need a reserve fund.
Reserve fund.
But you can't get one of those until I can tell you I don't have the money.
Okay, so you have to.
And I'm working on, February first, all the bills will be in, that's next weekend.
So based on what their proposal was, they're basically saying they have to replace the whole panel?
Yeah.
Which kinda surprises me that it's not just a module that's gonna thrive. So I'm kinda surprised that they can't come back with a secondary.
Well, I didn't talk to them, but Bob brought me that proposal. I had nothing to do with that.
Can you check with them and see if it's possible that maybe there's a repair they can do in order to get it operable? And then we can look at the other proposal.
You mean a band-aid?
Well, if, if it's not a permanent solution, if they can get the thing operable so that at least we have smoke and heat detector coverage, we know that if there's, you know, something going on, it's gonna trigger something in a section of the building that we not in, we are, you know, whatever.
You know, I did speak to the police side of it, and they said they felt where the building's being twenty-four seven, that if something was going on, they'd be the first to know about it, and, you know, we, so they didn't, if it was town hall and we're closing, there's nobody here, it would be more of a problem, you know, in their evaluation. Not suggesting Bob is, what he's saying isn't true, you know, but.
I, I'll tell you two things.
We all have to work together, you know, with our laws.
Is the police department accredited? Do we know?
It has.
They, they lose their accreditation without smoke detectors.
With that, with that, that, yeah.
It's.
We understand that, but we don't.
So that's my question.
I mean, I, I'm the bearer of bad news.
Right.
The fire, the firehouse is not manned.
Right, so maybe there's a way that they can set the thing up so that it's got the smoke detector coverage and the heat detector coverage with a monitoring to the dispatch, so.
Well, I, I would appreciate if we can wait until February for a second or third, whatever, for a business day is. Because if we do it halfway now, I'm gonna have to pay for that. And then if we have to do it that way, I'm gonna have to pay for that, and.
Exactly, we need some late ones.
We're almost.
If we can wait.
We're not ignoring it, we're just trying to find a way to pay for it.
As quickly as possible.
Right, right.
'Cause then the other process is gonna take a couple of weeks if we need to call up mon- monies from the reserve. But if, like Donnie said, if there'd be a quick fix in between, if we find out we don't have the money, but we squeak up money to fix it.
I just wonder if they put a new battery in it, if I was gonna.
They tried to make it work.
Okay.
I talked to Kenny from L W builds, he goes, it's fried. It's fried. We tried to reboot it, we tried to change the power supply, I think, so it just wasn't happening.
Well, you've given us a lot of information, a lot of food for thought, correct?
Yeah, very good, yep, well done, well done.
Good.
So where do we go next?
Um, you know.
Well, the next few weeks, we're gonna be tied up on finance director stretch stuff. I would say probably looking at, like, in a month or so.
Before we could determine if you could appoint me as the acting clerk?
Well, Nancy's gonna look into that. Our next meeting, I'm sure we can have feedback as to whether or not things like that can take place, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, we need an answer from council on that. And then we meet again in two weeks from tonight, which will be February something?
February ten.
Oh, third.
Is that?
No, a regular meeting, she's doing that.
Yeah, we'll talk two weeks, yeah.
Okay.
And then we're going to start our other process.
Third, we're gonna get together and try to make those calls.
Yeah. Is that, is that out of the question till, uh, next, next time we get together, February tenth or something?
When is the software happening? I'm actually.
I'm really talking, I'm talking to three vendors.
Okay.
I haven't made a final decision yet, although the one that said they'd honor their previous pricing was, looked pretty nice.
Yeah.
But maybe she was trying to close on me.
Yeah.
She didn't tell me I only had a week, so. But their pricing was good, and, and I liked the way their system's set up. They all offer, um, you know, cloud computing, which is nice. It's all backed up, I mean, it's all, it meets all the requirements you would expect for a fire department, so all three vendors do that. But they're all similar, they're all, there aren't a lot of competitors in that field, so, you know, the three you're looking at are fairly similar. They're all, just trying to have the next best thing. And I know some local users in the one that I'm looking at, so I can go there and watch them, watch them work with the system, and look at the reports they get, uh, and that's been helpful. It's like a dream.
Yeah. Can get to.
Yeah, and I'm not, you know, we, we've just outlived the, the current model.
Right. Right, it's happening everywhere now.
Okay, um, we've covered it all, right? Just make sure I didn't miss anything on this. We did vote already on the, um, the other property, we give them a month or two.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
Bye.
Thanks for listening.
Tracy, thanks again for coming out, I'm sorry if you're lost.